Welcome, everybody, to the, let's see, January 16th, 2024 Planning Commission Meeting. Do a little roll call. Mark Klecker, present. Rich?
Present.
Jason?
Here.
Tony? Anybody on? Or calling?
Uh, no.
Okay. All right. Election of officers. Assuming you and I are gonna do the same thing?
Yes.
Unless you want one of these positions. I'll make...
I'll make the motion to continue with our two officers from previous year.
Okay.
Mark is the chair and Mr. Spryder is our vice chair.
I'll second that.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Do you guys look at the minutes?
Yes.
Last meeting. Is there any corrections or?
Nope. I'll make a motion to approve as distributed.
And a second?
All second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Zoning ordinance amendments.
I'm sorry, I missed the motions on the minutes. You're first to second? Thank you.
Both.
Unless you want to be the second.
Doesn't matter.
Okay, for the zoning ordinance amendments, we wanted to continue the discussion that we've been having. There were amendments recommended that addressed some of the ambiguity in the screening language in the ordinance. And also, that was kind of a big deal for... The zoning hearing board members are here today. They're responsible for looking at special exception requests for short-term rentals in the city in the R1 and R1A districts. There was some concern about the language, about interpreting the language for screening, off-street parking requirements, and also for occupancy. So that's why we're here today to continue that discussion above proposed amendments, to tighten up the language in the ordinance, to make that interpretation easier and hopefully less subject to potential challenges as far as zoning compliance is concerned. So, again, we kind of handled the screening language with something that the Planning Commission already endorsed. The specifying the number of our off-street parking spaces was something that the Planning Commission has endorsed. This has all been in consultation with the Solicitor's Office. And so the issue of occupancy is, we're looking at the language in the ordinance. As it currently is stated in the ordinance, under 30557-3, it says, "STR accommodations shall not exceed the number of occupants allowed within the applicable zoning district." That's a blanket statement that talks about occupancy. And you could... You know, you could look at that, that it's implied, you know, occupancy, maximum occupancy in R1 and R1A districts, as far as residential occupancy, is single-family dwellings. You could look at that current language and say, well, it seems like that's kind of implied, that maximum occupancy would be limited to a single-family dwelling. It's not explicitly stated that way, however. Also, in 30557, we do have language regarding additional regulations for R1 and R1A. And the occupancy, you know, there's not a special statement for occupancy in R1 and R1A. It would fall back to that language in sentence number three. So that's really where we're at, at this point. And I know that we had members of the zoning hearing board that wanted to kind of be able to speak to those concerns directly to the Planning Commission. So they're here today, and I think at this point, you know, we could just open the floor to discussion.
Sounds good.
Good afternoon. I'm Laura Gunson. I am the outgoing chair of the zoning hearing board. Tom Sebold, who is on the board, and Jeff Johnson, who is the incoming chair. So as Jake mentioned, we've had several requests relative to special exception. The issue that we have with the language relative to screen planting and parking is that if we apply the ordinance as it's written, it almost exclusively eliminates most of the applicants relative to screen planting and relative to parking, specifically off-street parking. So we've had a number of conversations at the board level about a potential fix for that. We've reviewed the draft that the Planning Commission has drafted as well. And Tom specifically has some comments for today. We have, I think, Jake, you can correct me if I'm wrong, at least three, if not four, requests that are tabled right now, that have been tabled since October. Some of them since October, because we want to provide a clear path forward for people that are applying, that are doing the right thing, right? We know that there are short-term rentals out there that are not going through the process, and we don't feel that it's appropriate for us to be punitive to the individuals that are formally coming through the process and want to do the right thing. So, again, appreciate the opportunity to be with you today and talk about those issues. Want to come up?
So what's your recommendation, though, of eliminating the parking requirement?
Modifying the parking requirement. Screen planting, I was surprised, actually, to see screen planting then further amended in the... Excuse me, what I'm calling the parent ordinance, right? I was kind of surprised to see that it was then amended at that level, whereas if you looked at the requirements for sororities and fraternities, it requires that screen planting around the backside of it. Our issue was the way the short-term rental ordinance was written, screen planting was around the entire perimeter, which is also almost impossible. You have houses that have driveways that abut driveways. That's almost impossible, right?
Yeah, so how can, if it's on a cul-de-sac and there's no, it's impossible to provide a parking space.
Exactly. So the intent, we thought the intent of the screen planting was to provide that privacy in areas where folks would predominantly be in the backyard or would be in the side yard. To make that more reasonable, the sorority and fraternity language in the zoning ordinance, we feel, would be applicable. Where I have concerns with the amendments to the broader ordinance relative to screen planting is I think it's really important, for example, commercial and industrial that butts up against a residential neighborhood or adult use uses within the ordinance also has a screen planting requirement. If you think about Juliet's on 8th Street, there's a screen planting requirement there that if that were to go away, per the suggestion, then it's a privacy fence. To me, there's a big difference between a privacy fence and screen planting in a situation like that, where there, I feel, is an easier fix by utilizing the sorority and fraternity language relative to screen planting.
Can we craft the language in the ordinance in a way that provides zoning hearing board flexibility and interpretation on how to apply, when and how to apply? Like, one parking space per unit, when the geography allows, right? If there's a...
So that's difficult, and I can appreciate that suggestion. That's difficult, then, because then we're open to interpretation. And as a quasi-judicial board, then, we're opening ourselves in the city up to that appeal at the court level.
We need to be more black and white on it.
Yeah. So the parking requirement with being off-street. And my understanding from city council was that with requiring off-street parking, it was the intent of not dumping all of this parking out into the city system, right? For short-term rentals. If you're coming and you're one family, but you're coming from four different locations and you have four cars, requiring all those cars to be off-street, but the way that it's written, then, is you can't have any impediment to egress, right? So if you have a long driveway and a garage, it's a single driveway, that's one off-street parking space, because in order to get that car out, you'd have to move the other one, right? So that kind of sets it up for failure, whereas the board has talked about a lot that houses in the city of Erie do not have a too-wide... Many of them do not have a too-wide driveway, right? So as it's written, then, and as it's amended, we're dumping those cars out onto the city system, out onto the street, whereas in somewhere like East 38th and Glenwood, you're gonna have a lot of folks that are going to have a complaint with that, and then code enforcement is able to revoke a permit, right?
It's a requirement in the STR ordinance that all guest parking is off-street. Has to be. They have to post a notice. They have to say how many cars can park there, and then all guests are parked off-street. So if we use the suggested language where it's a minimum of one, then you're effectively, you're setting these people up for failure.
Absolutely.
Because if I'm a neighbor, I'm just gonna call every time there's three cars parked down the street. So you either have to remove that, which I'm not exactly for, or amend it so that you allow, you know, and parking in the driveway would be fair, I think, in that. But it's still gonna limit occupancy, in my mind. So, again, if you go to the sorority-fraternity parking reg, it's one per four occupants. Average family in Pennsylvania, average household is 2.4, I think, which is a weird number. So maybe round that to three and say one per three off-street parking. I think it has to be somewhat strict, because as Laura said, you can't... Especially, this is for all neighborhoods, by the way, not just R1. So I think if in the more dense districts, if you're jamming all those cars down there, these are a nuisance about them. So it's definitely something that's not gonna be resolved by saying one per unit or one per whatever.
I also think it's not...
There's a national movement right now to eliminate parking minimums in zoning. Fifty cities in the United States have already done this.
In residential areas.
Everywhere, everywhere, all parking minimums.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I think this, like, we've already actually talked about this two months ago. And that's on my list of 2024 goals is tackle that.
And stuff like that, you know, I'm aware of it in downtown urban areas and things like that, where there's parking garages and giant blocks and things like that, people have space, but...
Yeah, on tax-free lands.
In residential neighborhoods, and then you add people who specifically come by park, and then what do you come in by?
Yeah, there's people who wind wine about it in every city that does it, but ultimately it moves the city forward, because it's a progressive concept.
We also have a hundred and parking, which is a problem in the winter, right? So, and there's lots... I get trying to limit parking, but you can't get rid of it.
Yeah, so you say, but, yeah, there's studies that have been done that this is why this is a national trend right now that's occurring.
Yeah, but nobody's getting rid of the parking.
Well, I wouldn't mind getting rid of cars altogether, but...
You have to be realistic.
I'm being realistic. This is, Buffalo just did it this past year. Why can't we do it? Because you say we can't?
They didn't eliminate parking. They go to Buffalo.
They eliminated the parking minimums. They don't eliminate parking. They eliminate parking minimums. There's a difference. That means you, as the property owner, get to choose how much parking you want to put on your property or not. You can choose to make your customers or whoever walk as far as you want. So urban living in most countries is not car-driven.
I think, too, the way the amendments to dwelling, the definition of dwelling were proposed also, you've got some incongruence, because we go to the short-term rental definition. It says a short-term rental is a dwelling, right? So even if you remove dwelling, you remove short-term rental from dwelling on the front side, you still have some implications in the definition of short-term rental.
I have a question on the lodge behind that, please, was why the change in the definition of dwelling? Or what the reason was?
We were looking at best practice language, plus.
Yeah.
And I think that's what we should be doing again here, is what, why... Let's... Somebody else has solved this, because this is a problem in every community, right? Show hell so that everybody else address this.
Sure.
I mean, obviously, we want to have more cars on these, more cars to be able to park. So we just need the language correct to say, hey, hypothetically, if the driveway's 100 feet long, you can get six cars there. I don't know where you want to start, but, I mean, obviously, one car to that driveway is ridiculous.
Yeah.
You know, so...
I would agree with you, and I think the fair proposition would be, do you allow intended parking? You have to modify your parking.
Yep. I agree with you.
Okay.
We just gotta word it.
Yeah.
So Jake, you can, your department can find some language similar enough from other jurisdictions that have done this?
Yeah, I mean, we're gonna work with the Solicitor's Office to define the verbiage. You know, look at the areas that are being brought up, as far as are there inconsistencies between the different language and different sections of the book? And what's the biggest, what's the best solution to that, as far as amendments to the language?
The solution is end-to-end parking. We just gotta word it correctly.
Well, I mean, it's obvious that right now, you know, off-street parking is required for any short-term rental unit. So if somebody comes in the door, they want to operate a short-term rental in the city of Erie, and they don't even have a driveway, they're automatically not gonna qualify to operate a short-term rental.
So we dictate to people that they have to have a car in order to stay at an Airbnb?
Well, all I'm saying is...
But most people that show up to use an Airbnb aren't coming in a car.
Yeah, understood. But it doesn't mean that the city should have to approve a short-term rental to every property in the city of Erie. You know, Ed and I, Ed bets other city solicitors here, we participated in all the public hearings that went on for a couple of years, anyway, with all those concerns being voiced, as far as folks that are promoting short-term rentals and folks that have concerns about how they operate and where they operate. So council has heard all those concerns, both pro and con. And the language that was drafted, was drafted in response to those concerns and by utilizing best practices, model ordinance language, that was guidance from the PA Bed and Breakfast Association, who referred to some model ordinance language out of Monroe County. So that language was crafted over a number of years to take into account all the best practice language that we could find. And we were here for this. Yeah. So, you know, it, the idea now is to make sure that, since the zoning hearing board is reviewing these applications, and there are conditions that need to be met by the applicant, we want to make sure the language that's in the ordinance, that that language is clear. And certainly provides clarity and provides the specificity needed to determine zoning compliance. The occupancy of the building and the actual opening of a short-term rental unit still has to go through other items, still has to go through inspection, still has to be issued an occupancy permit under the building code, which actually still qualifies, or they still classify the building as a type of single-family dwelling. That's what, that's the occupancy permit that they get. So they're not getting an occupancy permit that says it's a hotel. It's, the building has to be set up itself, just like a single-family dwelling would be.
So right now, we're talking about considering language that we don't have in front of us to consider?
Right. Yeah, we're discussing the issue. And what I'm gonna do is, you know, Ed's here today to hear the concerns, and then we're gonna dig back into the ordinance language and see what makes the most sense. As far as R1 and R1A, I think, you know, my opinion from listening to all the testimony that was provided at the public hearings, is that I think it was council's intent to kind of limit the occupancy in the R1 and R1A neighborhoods to one family. It's, most of the properties are not set up to be able to really accommodate more than one family staying there at a time. You know, we're not talking about giant houses on the shore in North Carolina or something where five families are all meeting there, and they're sharing a 12-bedroom house. But beyond that, you know, we have to make sure the language is specific enough in the ordinance to let folks know that there are limits to who you're renting to and how many people you're renting to, at least specifically in R1 and R1A. So I think that's really what the question is right now. That's what we're really looking at. The number of off-street parking spaces required, I mean, everybody is gonna have an opinion on that. The way the ordinance is written, other types of transient lodging require one per rentable unit. This is a type of transient lodging. I think that's why that parking requirement was put in, to line up with the other parking requirements in the ordinance. It's, if it's, that's generally what you have to do as far as the zoning ordinance goes. You know, if you have similar uses, there should be similar restrictions.
Jake, to that point, though...
Or regulations.
Does the ordinance not say that short-term rentals are not transient, specifically?
No, they are. It's a type of transient lodging, because it's, transience defined as staying someplace for less than 30 days at a time. And that's what, that's what short-term rentals are defined as. Not a dwelling, but a dwelling unit. It's like a hotel room could be considered a dwelling unit, but it's transient, because people are staying there for less than 30 days.
Okay, and to your point about any additional language being clear and concise, I totally agree. The language also has to be attainable for people, right? Right now, it is not. I don't think that, and correct me if I'm wrong, I do not think that we've, as the city, have passed one short-term rental all the way through, just one. And out of how many applications? Probably 12, 10, 12?
Half a dozen.
Yeah. One has made it through the process.
Of the units that have been put on hold for the time being, are any of them other than one or 1A dwellings?
Jake would have to answer that. So the zoning hearing board, we only get special exemptions in R1 and R1A. Those are the only appeals that we see. And quite frankly, the majority of them meet all of the requirements except for parking or screen planting. And that's why they've been tabled, because we want to be fair to them.
Absolutely.
Yeah. So the changes regarding screen planting that we approved, maybe not last month, the month before, does that satisfy the concerns that you have?
Not necessarily. The language that we've seen, not necessarily, because it makes sweeping changes to the zoning ordinance itself in other districts other than short-term rental relative to screen planting. My example about Juliet's on 8th Street, if that were to be built again or to be approved again, it would be a privacy fence, not then the screen planting. So it's our consensus that utilizing the language for sorority and fraternity perhaps could be a better fit to the specific issues with the short-term rental.
Also, if your intent is to change all of the screen planting strip to the other, you missed about four. So you'd have to go through the ordinance and change a few more. And then, screen planting, the screen planting strip, it's pretty common throughout the ordinance, and it's very problematic. So it's not, that wasn't the issue. The screen planting wasn't the issue. It was the adjacent, because you didn't limit it to front and rear. That was our...
For short-term rental. Yeah.
It's just to touch on the screen planting and the proposed revisions for screen planting. The screen planting strip, it was brought up by the zoning hearing board that that was not defined, and that what, you know, everybody knows what a screen and what a planting, what a strip is, but not screen planting strip. And it is not defined in the ordinance. However, screening is, and screening allows for a combination of different things, and it's defined. So the rationale would be, take out, remove an undefined term and replace it with a defined term. And yes, you want to do that throughout the ordinance, so it's consistent. Frankly, I did a word search to find all the sections in the ordinance that refer to screen planting strips. And obviously, I'm looking at the fraternity-sorority section right now, and I see that it says, "shall provide screen planting." And the good thing is, is that it does specify side and rear yard areas. That's a good thing, because that's what we're suggesting for short-term rentals, is the same kind of screening, side and rear yard areas. So that's consistent. But I think just removing the term "screen planting strip" and replacing it with "screening," that's gonna make it easier to enforce, for sure.
Here's my disagreement with that. You set the standard that every term in the zoning ordinance has to be defined. Then the easiest example I'll use is foot, right? Everything's a setback. It's measured in feet. Foot isn't defined in the zoning ordinance. So whose foot is it? I use my own baby's foot. So I'm gonna build a six-foot fence, right? So I think if you set the standard that every term has to be defined within the ordinance instead of using the correct municipal planning code definition, which is, you use understood definitions for terms. And the definition for screen planting describes a disquous hedge row planted. It's pretty easy to make the jump that a planting screen is a hedge, right? That's my position on that. I think you're setting up a thing where you're actually creating more problems by trying to make a gray area where it's not gray. The screen planting definition is fine, and it's common throughout most municipalities, I believe, when I'm inspecting.
Anything else that we can answer for you today? I don't want to take a blow of your meeting.
I'm good. I just, we gotta work on this parking.
Yeah.
Well, the only other thing I'll add is that, you know, in the absence of a definition, there's certainly, you can't define every word and put it in the definitions section. In the absence of a definition, you, actually, the state code says you refer to the dictionary. And the dictionary will give you a standard definition. So as far as like something like a foot, I think we'll find a standard definition for what defines a foot. And that's entirely possible, too, as far as screen planting. You know, under the definition of screening, it refers to that it can be a landscaped, it can be a hedge, it can be a fence, a hedge, or a wall. So screening does allow for those three types of screens to be used. So what you're really talking about is, are you wanting to limit that to one type of screening instead of a choice of three? And we know that in some circumstances, there might not be a three-foot-wide area to put a hedge row in that could be properly maintained and survive, depending on where it's being placed. I think the flexibility of allowing for those other types of screening is a good thing. I, you know, again, that's my opinion. It's certainly more easily enforced because of the language in the book. It's really just a matter of, you know, we're talking about, do we want to be more limiting for certain types of uses to say you have to put in a hedge row versus a fence?
I would agree with all of that. It's up to you guys to make that recommendation. All we need to do is clear, so that we can enforce, because that's our problem.
Inconsistent.
Parking and all that. We're basically setting, if we want to fail, and if you don't want to do that, we want to issue licenses for that parking. So there's lots of ways you could approach it. You could remove a lot of these restrictions anyway and take us completely out of the loop, because they're pretty minimal to begin with. They just turned into crazy pickup hurdles because of the way they were written. I still would recommend, that was the big leaf they gave to us when we complained about it during the hearing process, right? With those three very minor restrictions. And I think the intent of council at the time was that it be a screen planting strip for privacy and effects. I think they just got confused on the language with what constitutes adjacent and how you would make it practical. Parking, they originally wrote it as adequate parking. So that's a pretty broad definition, but I think we can all agree that, you know, one space for 10 guests isn't adequate, unless they're all rolling up in a 10-bass motor van. You don't see people even having them, right? So I think it can be worked out there. My final thing is, as I still don't get, I think what you do when you change the definition of dwelling to remove STRs from it, that was the whole purpose of the STR ordinance, was to remove STRs from hotels, motels, and other transient rentals. It was to distinguish them from that. So now, you're basically lumping them back into not dwelling, even though they're required to be as dwelling or dwelling unit. So I think that then creates conflict. And I'll give you an example. In our neighborhood, a guy operates his business out of his house, right? He lives there, and then he rents out rooms or the whole house. I think if you reclassify an STR as not a dwelling, he's then a mixed-use property, right? So then you have ramifications for parking there. You've gotta double up his parking, because the parking code says if it's a mixed use, use the sum of both uses. I just don't see the reason for the change, I guess, is my issue with it. So it's making it more complicated, and it's not fixing anything.
Gotcha.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your time.
I appreciate you guys taking the time.
Not a problem.
Yeah. Needs to work for everybody.
Okay, we good?
Do you have some direction to come back with, looking at the issue, a couple of issues, and ways to resolve it?
Absolutely. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Planning a neighborhood resource update.
Good afternoon.
Hello.
Jake, do you mind putting... I put together a small PowerPoint, although I don't think it's that small anymore. You've met me before, but to some of the zoning ordinance or zoning hearing board, my name is Jackie Spry. I'm the new, sort of new director of the Planning and Neighborhood Resource Department. So... So some of these slides, you may have been present at the Denny Puko training session that occurred two years ago. And I thought it was a good idea, just to give a quick refresher, just to kind of set the tone of the, of the new year. I think every board and commission could use that.
I have them with me.
Very good. Very good. So then you'll.
Does that not surprise me?
You'll be very familiar with a few of these, a few of these. So the, what is the Planning Commission? Jake, next slide, sorry. And I think you're in my note, my note, if you put it into presentation mode. If you go to the right-hand corner, there's those icons on the bottom there, on the, on the bottom right. One more over. One more, one more over? To the right, to the right, to the.
Another way.
One more over, Jake. There you go. Okay. And I have to say that I, I am wearing, I am wearing my Department of Finance fleece here. This was an old, old gift to me from when I was ARP Program Manager, not to confuse you. So what is a Planning Commission? The Planning Commission member's first responsibility is to help his or her community develop a vision for the future growth and then seek out a way to implement that vision through the comprehensive plan and by reviewing plans for new development. It's an arm of the governing body. It's not independent. It's advisory, and its primary role is planning. Next slide, Jake, sorry. Just to go over a little bit of the, the planning ethics behind the, the members. The commission serve in a public capacity authorized under, of course, you know, the MPC. They're obligated to conduct themselves in an ethical and professional manner. There are two standards that are upheld, not binding, but upheld. It's the Code of Ethics through the AICP and APA's Ethical Principles in Planning. This is standard. It's not binding. It's a set of guidelines. However, some planning commission have formally adopted this ethical principles to assist them with, with decision-making. So just to set a standard. Next slide, Jake. This, this is a nice slide that I found from Penn State Extension that really talked about the roles and responsibilities of the Planning Commission. And as you see on the slide, you have prepare a comprehensive plan, which we have, prepare and administer SADO, prepare zoning ordinance, hold public meetings and hearings, promote interest in planning, maintain records of actions, prepare codes, recommend official map, and review land use ordinance with comprehensive plan. So I look at these and I see that a lot of what, what your priorities are or what our priorities are, are held within the preparing of the comprehensive plan, preparing and administering SADO, preparing zoning ordinance, and also promoting the interest in planning. So as we move to the next slide, as I mentioned, the primary role is the comprehensive plan, which luckily, we have a comprehensive plan, and it's to be the champion of that plan. But you can question whether recommendations are needed to implement this comprehensive plan, whether the comprehensive plan needs updating, whether there's principles to be applied or followed that are maybe not in the plan, and zoning amendments are necessary, whether that be amendments or a complete revision of the zoning and SADO. So as we move to the next slide, the reactive and proactive approach, which I think over the, and I'm only speaking from what I am hearing from the department, is that we have really asked the Planning Commission to have a more of a proactive approach in, in planning. And so we're asking for that and we encourage it. But yes, we're asking also that, or not asking, but with that comes a structure for change and in which to operate, and that the Planning Commission is one piece of that structure. As, and we'll talk a little bit further. There, there are other pieces. If we were to look at the revisions of the zoning, of the zoning code, what that, what that might look like and how we may, how the process may look. So as we move into the next slide, some of these you have already seen before, because I, when I first took on the role of director, I provided you with a few pages of what the grants that we were working on. But what I did with the following slides is I related it all back to the comprehensive plan and where the priorities lie within the comprehensive plan and how the, the priorities for 2024 are in line with, with the comp plan. So as you see, West 12th, I've talked to you about that, Street Corridor Land Use Transportation Plan, Safe Streets and Roads for All, East Bay Front Greenway Plan, Comprehensive Parks and Rec Plan, Historic Preservation Plan, Neighborhood Plan, Zoning Ordinance and Subdivision and Land Development Ordinance Audit, and then Housing Plan. And these are priorities that I, that I, I have seen where some of them were in the 2023 priorities. Some of them are new, some of them are grants that we have, that we've received and we have, we are able to begin in, in this upcoming year. So the first priority, the West 12th Street Corridor Land Use and Transportation Plan, this comes directly out of the comp plan. The comp plan notes that a world-class downtown and bayfront surrounded on both sides by healthy neighborhoods and augmented by a vibrant 12th Street corridor will put the city in a strong financial position and support neighborhood revitalization and stabilization efforts citywide. So this is addressing that, that core focus area. And as I mentioned, we will be working with WRNA with, at the county. We are, we will begin our kickoff meetings shortly, and this work is projected to be complete, not projected, but will be complete by June of this year. The hope is to also, in the comp plan, identify two or three properties along 12th Street that are strong candidates for redevelopment and conversion of shared access mixed-use and workspaces. Safe Streets and Roads for All, this is, this prior, this is really a priority street upgrade in the core strengthening areas. I, I pulled that right out of the comp plan. So we're going to be looking at different intersection streets, doing a safety analysis, and based on that, provide recommendations with the hope that we would receive a larger pot of money to do implementation. So we're identifying and executing here. Now, the RFP for Safe Streets for All was posted and completed. We are right now in the process of picking a consultant. We have interviews with two, two of our finalists this week, and we hope to select a consultant by the end of this week. So we're in good standing there in our, in our schedule. East Bay Front Greenway Plan, out of the comp, comprehensive plan was, wording was to establish a network of new parks by a targeted demolition and land assemblage. That language was specifically for the East Bay Front Neighborhood. So East Bay Front Neighborhood was, was a focus area in the comp plan. This was an out-of-the-gate project and for strategic demolition and park development work in the East Bay Front, like I mentioned. The Erie Neighborhood Growth Partnership received a $25,000 grant for the next four years through the PA Council of the Arts Creative Communities Initiative. This funding will be used to partner with Groundwork Erie's green team of high school-age youth employed from Erie neighborhoods doing environmental work within the city, in particular, the East Bay Front Greenway Trail. The Redevelopment Authority, the, the plan has been finalized. The Redevelopment Authority is in the process of approving it. And then, an RFP has already been posted to hire a landscape architect or to do the design for a, a portion of that plan. So it is underway, which is very exciting, because we are going to start to see the fruits of the, that labor payoff, so. Next is the Comprehensive Parks and Rec Plan, which I've talked to you a little bit about. This, this priority really, it comes out of the activating our vision. It's one of the mayor's key performance indicators. It's to prioritize, prioritize park improvements through neighborhood and citywide planning, identifying most pressing needs within parks and factor into, and factor into capital improvement plan. So you would be very much a part of that process when that rolls out. Next is the Historic Preservation Plan, which I know you've been hearing a lot of updates about. That plan is almost finalized. We have a survey out right now for the draft Historic Preservation Plan. And once that closes, then we'll, we'll push that through for adoption. It is also, there is funding that we have for a comprehensive historic building survey that we'll be, that we'll be working on next to draft a RFP and post that for, to hire a consultant to do that survey. This all comes out of also the comp plan to advocate for effective preservation of the city's historic assets. Next is Implement Neighborhood Plans. The comp plan was really based in these focus areas. Many of them, obviously, were the neighborhood zones or districts. And so to, the, the priority is to create strategic priorities for each of the planning areas or neighborhood, neighborhoods. So we will continue to do that throughout this year and, and in the future years. We may have a little bit of a delay at this moment with looking into doing another neighborhood plan or focus area, targeted focus area, because we have the new rollout of our, of our digital infrastructure, our new software that's coming in the next few months. And so that's going to be a really, a priority to make sure that that's a smooth transition in the department. So our, our neighborhood planner is going to be very focused on making sure that all that, all of the levels of that are, are smoothly running. So we may have a little delay in that, but we will see that hopefully at the second half of the year again. Next is the Zoning Ordinance and Subdivision and Land Development, Land Development Ordinance Audit. So I pulled the language right out of the comp plan that said aligning zoning and design regulations with principles and strategies outlined in the comp plan. We've been, some of the discussion in your meetings, as well as with, internally in our, in our department meetings, as well as with Michael Baker, our consultant, have brought up this, how, how can we initiate this process of what it, what is, what is it that we need to do here to align zoning and design regulations? The first thing that we plan to do is examine our existing land use map. And we can do that internally now, because we have a GIS administrator. So our GIS administrator, Aaron Pence, at the directive of Aaron Carey, will take the, the land use, land use from the county, land uses from the county, and she will aggregate them into specific land use categories that make sense. So commercial, apartment, vacant land, what did I have here? Sorry, I'm missing my spot. And she'll, she'll put together a existing land use map. From that, we would work with our consultants, most likely, to review existing plans, do public engagement, have a lot of internal discussions, and we would be able to, through that, be able to develop a future land use map. Now, when looking at the Erie Refocus, the comp plan, there is actually a future land use, existing and future land use map in the comp plan. But we don't know exactly the methodology of how this was created. We don't know what, at, at to what level the engagement was, was followed. So we have these in this comp plan, but it's also from 2016. So it's time, it's due time for us to, to update those maps. After that, we would do a complete audit of the zoning ordinance and SADO to determine anomalies, to determine barriers or discrepancies. And then we would hopefully explore, be able to explore funding opportunities to do a comprehensive revision of the zoning ordinance and SADO, which I'm hearing costs anywhere between $100 and $150,000 to do. We, Aaron and I met with Mill Creek, with Matt Waldinger at Mill Creek. We had an extensive conversation about their process with their complete revision of their ordinances, and it was very helpful. So we, we, we anticipate it's going to be an expensive and somewhat length, lengthy process. So we want to make sure we set ourselves up so we can move forward and, and be successful in that.
I'm certain you can farm that if I can't do that internally.
Well, we can do, we can.
I use the zoning, our day job is we use the zoning code all the time. I consider the laws are in ten minutes. You don't need to spend $150,000 on that. Expertise is here in town. What's the purpose? Credential people on, on the connective, because our skills sets, you have to hire this out. Take us a lot of money.
From what I understand, this is.
Some communities that just erase their whole zoning and start with one thing.
I wish it was that simple. I wish it was that simple. I wish it was that simple, but you are governed by, by the MPC. And the MPC states specifically that anytime you're going to do a revision, a complete revision, you're going to have to follow the enactment.
We need to do a complete revision. That's only a pure.
Well.
Flexibility and development.
That's coming from one person. We need to, we need to, we need to. Yeah.
Just reactive to when you have lawsuits. The only changes we've made to any zoning is funding from lawsuits. We've tried to make changes, and those changes are, suggestions are largely ignored. But we can throw $150,000 at somebody that's going to tell you the same thing, a real fact, and you will tell you.
I think we need to start with looking at our existing land use. That's where we need to go first. And where, what, what the future land use map looks like.
The zoning map tells you what you're allowed to do. You have no choice unless you have a variance outside of it. Land use map came from largely from the same one that dictates what you can use. It shouldn't.
Yeah. Correct.
So it makes sense to update it.
Yeah. So it's, I guess, I guess what I, we, I hear you, we hear you, we hear all of you. We want to be able to do this in the right, with, with the right process. We want to be able to work together. I know that you, you've mentioned that, that you've, you've said, been saying this for quite some time, but we haven't had, we haven't been able to have, I guess, we haven't had the capacity to do it or the money to do it, and we have the ability to start somewhere. And that's, that's our roadmap for looking at zoning and, and SADO at this moment.
We had a plan, but there was no choice.
Right.
Now we have a plan. What is the point? We still have to hire other plans.
I can't answer that exactly yet. I really, I don't, I don't want to, because I don't know the full process. I mean, we spoke with Matt at, at Mill Creek. I've never gone through that.
Our city should not, we do not want to count ourselves. That's all.
I think I'm speaking to the process, not to what, what they're planning for in the future. I think we need to look at it comprehensively. I think we need to make sure that we engage with the public. We engage with the different, you know, we're, we do it in the, in the right manner. It's not simply just changing. It's not simply just changing 10 things listed in some author's article. It just doesn't work that way.
A bank of 40 years shouldn't travel. Other communities have tested.
Well, we haven't done a Parks and Rec, comprehensive Parks and Rec Plan in 47 years, but that doesn't mean that we, in 40 years, but that doesn't mean that we're going to just start putting money into different parks because we just want to do it that way. I want to make sure that we're working, we're working through the process. I mean, I don't exactly know what that is yet. All I know is I can tell you that we're examining the land use map first and that hopefully we can move forward after that. I mean, we're going to be doing that within the next week. So, once I have that, I can share that with you, then we can go to the next step.
To make recommendations, we make recommendations and nothing happens.
I can only speak from this point forward.
I know you're new, I'm just telling you, this is frustrating, I've sat here for years and every time, like usually at this meeting, we're on the agenda for the first meeting there for to make our recommendations on our priorities. We're just being picky to you, right, and you, and that's what your priorities are. It's not even on the agenda, we're just expressing our
Well, primarily, the priorities are set with the money that we receive through grants. I mean,
My suggestions from two months ago were all no cost changes to the
Well, your suggestion was the, to read the article that lists out the 10 things that we should be changing in our zoning ordinance, which I read. And I know that author, and I know, I know he's well-versed in zoning. But again, we need to follow what the MPC says, and we need to make sure that we do the first initial step. So, I listened to that, I read what you said, and I'm here telling you that we will be examining the existing land use. And we'll have that within the next week or so to share. So, that's the first step. I'm just making sure I didn't miss anything in that section. I think that was it. Okay. So, so those are primarily driven by the grant funds that we've received. Not all of them, but most of them, or ARP money. The updates here that you see, I just wanted to kind of let you know where the department is in terms of some of the other things that we were working on. I hope you know that we received approval of three additional property maintenance inspectors in the department. The department has not been at this capacity since 2004, I believe. So, we're hoping to be a bit more proactive in our approach with BLIGHT and code. We also just hired two full-time staff for the Neighborhood Resource part of the department. And we, in the last week, we've been working through what the framework of that Neighborhood Resource Department is going to, or Neighborhood Resource Part is going to look like for the department and also for other departments, how they're going to be integrated into City Hall. Primarily, we're focusing on code at this moment because the relationship, hoping to build the relationship between providing resources out in the community with code enforcement. Also, I mentioned the rollout of the digital infrastructure. So, the ESRI and the CityWorks software, we anticipate will be around April, May, that we hope to have that rolled out. And then, it's going to take probably a few months to get everybody onboarded and then transition to the new software. Love Your Block, which is a component now of Neighborhood Resources, will be in its third year. And again, we are working through with the guidance of Erin on what that's going to look like this year, how many grants we'll be able to do, relationships that we'll be able to bring to the table there. Also, the Environmental Advisory Council, which I know that you approved, I believe, last year. We have our second meeting this month. We are just establishing framework, board administration, bringing training to them for the first couple sessions. It's a really, it's a board that's very, wants to be very proactive as well. It is an advisory board. In terms of BLIGHT remediation, we hope to address the last about 70 properties that are unsound or in poor condition. I think it was two years ago, Erin, that the list was at 470. And so, we're now down to 70 properties still on that blighted list. Also, we are going to still be combating delinquent rental registrations. And we also have made it, we're hoping to make it a priority to combat unregistered rentals. We're in the midst of trying to put together a, some kind of list to start with. It's very difficult to find those, including short-term rentals. And then, lastly, establishing a housing court. I don't know if you were aware, but we did meet with multiple, a few other municipalities to discuss some of the barriers to violation, the violation process. So, that discussion is still going on. I'll be presenting to the COG next month on the importance of at least improvements to the legal process, if that's the route we're going to go. I think that's it. That's it. So, any other questions for me or for Erin? Erin is my support.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, did, did you ever add Colin under this? He emailed us, and I just saw it.
Did he call in?
I'm on a call if I can get added. Was it 1:00, 1:05?
Yeah, because I never saw him on the attention.
Okay, yeah, just wondering. Do you have any public comment? Uh-oh.
This is our first one in months.
Yeah, that's why I smile when I say it. I don't know why it's on here.
Thank you. I'm Kathy Schaff, and I'm talking to you as a citizen and as a city councilperson as well. But I really want to thank you very much, the zoning and the planning. You are a wonderful group of people, working together, volunteering your time. So, you have to have the commitment of love for our city. You're knowledgeable. You are spending your free time. You wouldn't have to be here, you could be doing other things. And yet, you've been on for years. I've attended in 2015 the meetings. So, I wanted to really thank you. And I also want to say that somehow you have to include everyone. And that's so vital too, because we can't just, you know, do it for the people who want to use it for entertainment, our city, or whatever. We have to include all people. And so, I just wanted to say that with Martin Luther King, because, you know, we don't want to see the redlining. And as a person who lived on 38th and Bird Drive area, growing up and had flags put through our garden to say that there was a highway coming through our property, it didn't do it, but it did do others. So, you know, you are the resources. And I just hope this bayfront thing isn't, is going to be okay when all is said and done. Because my husband and I like to travel by car. And one time, we took a trip all the way up to Maine, and we took the least road that was traveled. And I want the bayfront highway to remain a scenic, slow travel place. And I have a love-hate relationship for it because there's accidents. And I've been, when I was on council before and trying to get PennDOT to create slowness on it, and it hasn't happened yet. And there are so many people going well over and above the speed limit, it's dangerous. And pedestrian accidents in our city. So, I like the need for safe pedestrians. And just thank you. And I just can't say enough because you are knowledgeable. I know your backgrounds, and I just want to thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Never get to hear that.
No.
Never get to hear that. All right. I need a motion to adjourn.
I'll move to adjourn.
Second, all in favor.
Second.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone.